Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Stratford City Council Meeting. We'll begin this afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Joining me in the council chamber is Chief Administrator Officer Joan Thompson, Clerk Tatiana Defoe, and Deputy Clerk Chris Bantock. I believe Counselor Seven is also on the line through the phone, but not with video. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none, we'll now go to the next item.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion on the agenda as follows: that the minutes of the special council meetings dated October 29th and the regular meeting of council dated November 9th, 2020 of the Corporation of the City of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Mover for such, Counselor Bunting, and seconded Counselor Ritzma. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item?
Item four is adoption of the addendum to the agenda, and there's a motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated November 23rd, 2020 be added to the agenda as printed to include item 8.1.
Counselor Henderson will move, and Counselor Vazalakos will second the adoption of the addenda. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? If any? Thank you. That's carried.
Item five is report of the committee of the whole in camera session, and item 5.1 from the November 9th session under the municipal act as amended matters concerning the following items were considered: one, security of municipal property of municipality; two, personal matters about identifiable individuals and labor relations or employee negotiations; three, proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality; and at the in-camera session, direction was given on all items. Item 5.2, at the November 19th session under the municipal act, a matter concerning the following item was considered: advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by the municipality; and at that in-camera session, direction was given. And just before today's in-camera session, there was a meeting held to consider eight items related to personal matters about identifiable individuals, and a matter related to advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege and including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by the municipality. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on seven of the items related to personal matters about identifiable individuals, and on the matter related to advice that's subject to solicitor-client privilege.
Next item?
Moving on to item six, hearing of deputation and presentations. Item 6.1 is the presentation by United Way, and there is a motion that the presentation by Ryan Earp regarding an update on the activities of the United Way be heard.
Counselor Ingram will move, and Counselor Burbach will second it. Mr. Earp be heard. All those in favor? Opposed? If any? That's carried. And we'll now bring Mr. Earp into the meeting.
Thank you, your worship. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. So just an opportunity today to provide an update on much of the work that's gone on the last number of months here at the United Way, so that you're aware. We've been busy. You've all been busy. COVID has changed our world in significant ways, and I wanted to make sure that this group was understanding of many of the important things that have happened in and through our organization. So first of all, just begin by saying thank you to members of council, to the staff of the city of Stratford, who have been supportive of many of our efforts over the last number of months, especially later to COVID-19. We have done much of this in partnership with you, and we're grateful for that. But we did begin in March with a new way of looking at the world, and we launched something called Local Love and a Global Crisis. So this is on slide two of your deck. Since that time, it says on your slide that we've distributed $892,000. And I wanted to update you that actually, as of today, that's almost $1.1 million. So even since we have, since we distributed this per diem to you, there has been a significant more dispersment of funds from that fund as organizations have come to us and requested support. So $1.1 million is a substantial amount of money that we have been able to gather from a number of different sources. So first of all, generous donations from the community. We also have received funding from the federal government to disperse on their behalf, and we also have partnered with the City of Stratford Social Services to share some of the social services relief funding through our organization to folks. And so that's where this $1.1 million has come from, and we've helped well over 60 organizations. I think it's approaching 70 now with that. So just so you're aware, a substantial amount of activity has happened through the Local Love and a Global Crisis efforts. As part of that, we also were making sure that organizations in the community and community members themselves were updated on information. And so you'll see on the next slide that we updated very quickly within a few weeks of the crisis, 1,000 records in the 211 database, making sure that when people called that number for help, that the information was accurate, because we knew that immediately things were changing. Programs were being offered online. Some programs were discontinued, and other things were started. And so we wanted to make sure that that information was accurate. We did extend additional hours to some staff to make sure that that could happen during the crisis, and we continue to keep that as a priority. We also launched the Help Do Local Good.ca portal, and worship Mayor Matheson and I talked about how to engage volunteers at the beginning of the crisis. And one of the biggest ways we did that was through the Facebook page, the Care-Mongering page that we built in partnership with libraries, including the Stratford Public Library. We had almost 4,000 group members, and they were able to receive accurate information about what was going on, because we partnered with the Health Unit to make sure strong information was out there for folks. And we also were able to triage people to get the right information and help that they needed through that process. We matched volunteers in the community who were willing to help their neighbor. We had people calling from BC saying, "How can I get groceries to my aging grandparent?" And we were able to match people through this process, so that neighbors could help neighbors, and we were very pleased with that process. A significant part on the next slide you'll see about the urgent needs fund of our effort was to rapidly advance a project that we had begun talking about with the Social Services Department to be able to give individuals in need additional financial support. And so to this date, we've helped well over 600 people receive about $80,000 in that partnership, which we're really grateful for. Kim and her team have been tremendous to work with throughout this time. It just has meant the world to us that we've been able to raise money, and they have been able to disperse those funds to the community. And it's a fantastic thing that has happened. We continue with that. We're fundraising for that on an ongoing basis through the campaign and otherwise to make sure that there is funding available for people as they have urgent needs. We expect this to be a positive legacy of COVID-19, that we have this program in place in our community. Additionally, on the next slide, you'll see the Altogether Campaign. This has been sort of a side campaign that we've launched over the last couple of months to help support hospitality workers in Stratford. And we're grateful that we have support and partnership with the BIA, with Black Swan, with PATSO, and the Local Community Food Center to pull this off. In just about two weeks, we'll be making the announcement about launching the application process. We've been raising money the last few months for it, and there's a concert coming up the BIA is putting on with the Good Lovelies. You've probably heard about this already, but we're looking forward to the proceeds from that concert and other efforts to help hospitality workers in our community. The Local Community Food Center will be administering the application process on our behalf, which we're grateful for. So that's an important process that's happening, too. On the next slide, you'll see very quickly, one of the things that we did was some research, and Counselor Vazalakos is familiar with this, because she's involved with Social Research and Planning Counselor, Council. We wanted to understand the impact that not-for-profits were having. So early on, we did a survey, and one of the things we found out is that charities and not-for-profits were indicating early on that their finances were negatively impacted by COVID-19. It was an important stat for us. It helped us to leverage conversations with the federal and provincial governments at the United Way of Canada and other bodies to help people understand the need that was there. And I think it had something to do with how we were able to receive additional government funding by being able to quote local statistics like that. Many other bits of information have helped us along the way. Throughout the time, we also have been growing and increasing partnership with the University of Guelph. One of the outcomes on the next slide is related to the transformative resilience project. And so we do now have a process in place where organizations can actually receive help from the United Way, the Social Research and Planning Council, and primarily the University of Guelph, to go through a new planning process that helps them demonstrate and understand their own resilience in this time and others. And so we've piloted that project now with six organizations over the next number of months, and I think it's going to be quite an important piece of our work going forward. Next slide is related to one of the unignorable issues that we continue to work on, the homelessness issue, and just wanted to really say thank you again to Kim and her team. They've been phenomenal over the last number of months dealing with greater challenges because of COVID, but also we have been at the table for many conversations, forward-thinking conversations, some of which I think need a bit more work before we can publicly talk about them. But there's a lot of proactive work happening around that table. And of course, I'm co-chairing with Alex the coordination efforts among organizations right now to try to improve that piece after the By Name List and the Built For Zero priorities. And so we're excited that we can continue to contribute in that regard with our organization. Next slide, I think, is the living wage slide. So just a quick reminder that we are helping people with living wage. And is that the right order, guys? My papers might have got out, or do you see living wage next? They're nodding. Okay. All right. The living wage conversation does continue, even though we did not produce a calculation this year for fear that the numbers wouldn't adequately reflect the reality. So much changed so quickly. By relying on last year's numbers, we were afraid, and then Living Wage Network in Ontario was afraid the number wouldn't be accurate. So we are pausing a calculation until next fall. But in the meanwhile, we are working out how to do a provincial calculation, so that all areas of the province are covered if you have industry that it lives and works in another area as well. And so there'll be interesting information. And we encourage council, even though this is a difficult year, as you prepare for your budget. I know that last year, you were seriously considering implementing the living wage program for the city of Stratford. If that's possible, we certainly encourage and would be open to more dialogue with HR staff and anybody else who was in that process. But understanding that budgets are tight, and this is a difficult time. Finally, the next couple of things, the forum, Basic Income, we held recently. So if you're interested in learning more about basic income and that whole process, the Social Research and Planning Council had a forum with people from across Canada joining. We had featured panelists Senator Kim Paint, Ron Heikel, Dr. Tracy Smith-Carrier in Ford. We're interested. So these folks are really among Canada's and North America's really experts on the field. And so we enjoyed the conversation that that brought forward, and we hope that it continues to leverage conversations. And thanks, Mayor Dan, for your efforts at provincial tables and other places for talking about income as a continued challenge that we face. Maybe not everybody agrees necessarily with this way of going at it, but the problem of income is with us, whether we like the basic income proposal or not. But certainly, the United Way and the Health Unit are solidly behind it and looking for new ways to advance it. We also had the Deb Talk session recently, part of our fundraising strategy, but also a way to communicate about issues that are facing women in the community, which went really well. And so if you didn't take it in, I'm sorry, you'll have to wait till next year till we have another one. Finally, a couple of things, words of thanks. Last year, the city of Stratford, its employees and the grant from the city raised $45,000 for the United Way, which we were grateful for. And this year, we have a goal of 1.762 million, which is up about 6% over last year. It's a big deal. It's a challenge. My sincere thanks to Counselor Ritzma and his wife for, again, co-chairing the campaign this year. We're well on our way. We've been pacing basically equal with last year, which is nothing short of a miracle in COVID times, we think, showing the generosity of our community continues. But it's well worth it, because we were able to help almost 35,000 people last year with that support. So happy to answer any other questions. But today, there isn't really an ask of you, other than to say thank you, and really proud to walk alongside all of you folks and the leadership and the Social Services Department in particular.
Thanks so much, Ryan. And on behalf of the city, I want to thank Counselor Ritzma and Catherine Ritzma for their leadership, as well as the entire cabinet and staff of the United Way for the work that is done. This past year, you have done monumental work at ensuring that support is getting to those in most need, and we appreciate your partnership. Any questions from Mr. Earp, members of council? Counselor Burbach?
It's not actually a question, just echoing the thanks. And I did attend the Deb Talk meeting, and it was excellent. And I really hope that there are going to be more of those sessions where we can focus on issues that women are facing, especially during these times. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram, do you? Anyone else? If not, okay. Thanks, Ryan. We appreciate your time. We'll go on to the next item.
Moving on to item seven, orders of the day. Item 7.1 is a resolution regarding Committee of Adjustment Electronic Signatures. And there is a staff recommendation that procedural bylaw 113-98 be amended to permit electronic signatures on decision documents signed by the Committee of Adjustment members when electronic meetings of the committee are permitted, and that the clerk be directed to bring forward a bylaw to amend this procedural bylaw to give effect to the proposed changes obtained in this report.
Thank you, Mr. Defoe. Counselor Ingram, you're moving then. Seconded by Counselor Vazalakos. Discussion? Counselor Henderson?
I wasn't sure whether to bring this up on our new business or not, but could we also have staff look at proxy voting and bring that report back to us? Thanks.
If under new business at the end, you could bring it up, we could have a motion as such that it'd be...
Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Thank you. Carrie, next item?
Item 7.2 is a resolution regarding the Municipal Accommodation Tax Project and Stratford Tourism Alliance Review Update. And there is a staff recommendation as follows: that the report entitled Municipal Accommodation Tax Project and Stratford Tourism Alliance Review Update be received, that direction be given with respect to halting development of municipal accommodation tax and a Stratford Tourism Alliance Review at this time, that retaining a consultant to develop a tourism strategy for the city be referred to the 2021 budget, and that staff work with Destination Stratford to obtain consultant quotes and to identify funding options for budget deliberations.
If I could, somebody want to move in second, then I'm just going to Mr. Defoe clarify one other piece. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Burbach, and then Counselor Mr. Defoe.
Through your worship. So the purpose of this report is to provide counsel with an update on the municipal accommodation tax project and on the requested review of the Stratford Tourism Alliance. At the February 10th, 2020 regular council meeting, council adopted a number of resolutions approving and supporting the establishment of a municipal accommodation tax. At the March 9th meeting, council adopted a resolution requesting a comprehensive review of the STA and the development of an ad hoc committee with the purpose of reviewing the proposed municipal accommodation tax. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, both of these projects are put on hold. Since then, additional research has been undertaken on the mat, and the STA began piloting a new business model with an increased focus on destination management and development and resolved to represent all local tourism-related businesses. This STA also changed its operating name to Destination Stratford. Due to significant impacts of COVID-19 on Stratford's tourism industry and the changes already made by the former STA, staff are recommending deferral of development of a mat and review of the STA. Staff also recommend consideration be given to the completion of a tourism strategy for the city. A new tourism strategy completed by a third party would assist the city in understanding and setting targets and strategies for tourism. If council is interested in completing a new tourism strategy, it is recommended that the city engage a consultant to assist with completing a five-year strategy and action plan. The comprehensive staff recommendation was included with your agenda, and I did just read it out. And I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for the clerk at this time? Counselor Vazalakos, and Counselor Bunting?
So I have a question around the funding for this. So is the idea that it would be a tourism strategy that's funded by the city, or it would be funded partially through the budget, the Destination Stratford puts in through the other outside boards?
Okay.
Through your worship, it is staff's expectation that we would work with Destination Stratford to obtain consultant quotes and identify funding options, and these would be brought back to council if included as a project in the 2021 budget.
Okay. And I believe I had Counselor Bunting your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. A lot of my points have actually been covered, but I just want to reiterate some things here. It's my belief that we should really get the Stratford, the short-term rentals taken care of before we look at the MAT. And all likelihood, the MAT may not come into effect for a year or two. It's hard to say how it's going to play out. But I strongly recommend that Destination Stratford, in particular, the interim AD, be involved in an advisory capacity in all fronts that anything has to do with tourism. And thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there anything further? If not, all those...
Sorry, I had a question.
Go ahead, Cory. Counselor Seven?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to confirm, pick up on what Counselor Vazalakos was saying. I just wondered if this would be, so during budget discussions, will we be talking more about sort of whether that comes out of the city's budget for the tourism study or the STA's budget?
That is correct. Ms. Thompson is telling me that.
Okay. And then, thank you. I just wanted to also comment that I was, I am in favor of this being put off until we get back to somewhat more normal pace. So I support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Vazalakos, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I was going to say that I support the motion as well. And also, I was just wondering, because I think it's a good point, that we should probably have in place the rules, regulations, policies, licensing for short-term rentals before we proceed. Do we have, I know we're in the middle of COVID, so we're still dealing with it. Do we have a timeline on finalization of the zoning bylaw, and then also any of the business licensing that would flow out of that? It's okay to say no. Maybe we can just come back.
Yeah, we, our staff is working on that through a consultant, and I'm going to check on the timelines, but I'm hoping that we may not have enough time between now and Christmas, but early in the new year to bring back the zoning bylaw. We were looking to bring it back in the spring, but with COVID and the meetings being delayed, that got delayed. But that is the plan right now, to bring back the zoning bylaw based on the last council direction provided to staff.
And so my point is that when that comes, that might dovetail nicely with wherever we are in terms of the tourism strategy.
That's correct. Okay, anything further? If not, all those in favor of the motion? Thank you. Next item?
Item 7.3 is a resolution regarding the Britannia Phase II Development Plans, and there is a staff recommendation that council approve the development of Phase II Britannia Street Affordable Housing Project. That council authorize the mayor, city clerk, and director of social services to enter into a contribution agreement for Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative funding. The council authorize the mayor, city clerk, and director of social services to sign and submit a declaration of integrity and relevant documents for Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation funding opportunities. The council authorize an exemption from the purchasing policy to allow for the sole sourcing of an architecture firm for Phase II. That SRM Architects, Inc. be retained as the architecture firm for Phase II. That staff be authorized to issue a tender for a project manager in accordance with the city's procurement of goods and services policy, and that council endorse the need for one additional staff resource for property resident management services in the 2022 operating budget of the housing division.
Thank you. A mover, Counselor Vazalakos. Seconder, Counselor Burbach. Discussion? I have Counselor Vazalakos, Burbach, Clifford, and Gaffney.
I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity. I'm assuming that this is going to be very similar to Phase One, where both the financing, carrying costs for this project, as well as the operating costs are going to be covered within the revenue that is generated from the development. I'm pretty sure that was the discussions we had at budget time around Phase One, and I'm assuming Phase Two is going to be similar to that.
Through your worship, yes, that is.
Thank you. Counselor Burbach?
Thank you. Yes, I had a few questions. We know that Phase One, there are some modifications that will need to be looked at by the architects. One of them that I'm not sure if we've discussed recently is that there are no balconies. There's no outdoor private space for tenants who would live there. And with COVID-19, I think it's kind of come to our attention how important it is to have some outdoor area that people can have as their own, as a private space. So I would recommend that that might be something that the architects might want to look at. I've also, I had a question from one of the tenants. Will there be some moment in the process where they will, the current tenants will be consulted, Phase One folks, who may be able to make some very good suggestions for how Phase Two would go moving forward?
Ms. McElroy?
Thank you, through your worship. Yes, we can look at the review of balconies. We have put together, through conversations with Britannia One tenants, but we can go back and discuss best practices and what we've learned from Britannia One.
Thank you. And there was one more question, and I don't know if this is the place to answer it, or if Ms. McElroy is the person to answer it, but there was a question about what's happening at the property adjacent, that city property that was looking to be developed. Do we have any more information on that?
Mr. DeLore?
Yeah, through your worship, yes, planning has been in discussions with the developer. They did develop a draft plan, and so they've come back to the table based on some comments. So there's ongoing discussions on that. But no firm timelines from the developer yet.
Thank you.
Counselor Clifford?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask about the added staff. Is there any, like, can you explain, is it only for Britannia Street apartments, or is it for other things? Could you help us explain how come we're hiring and what job they'll have exactly?
Through your worship, Counselor Clifford, we are looking at hiring an additional staff. We have found it's not specifically for Britannia, but it will be for property management. And as we've seen, as of late, this is an area that we are needing extra resources, adding extra units to the portfolio. This will have over 600 units, that we only have two staff currently available throughout the county.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gaffney?
I'm going to take Counselor Clifford's point one step further. We talk about the difficulty we're going to have attaining an acceptable level at budget time for 2021. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves to make a commitment on hiring for 2022. And I don't begrudge the fact that you may need this person, but making that part of your submission for 2022 would be a better way to go about it, because then you can submit all the information and stuff to ask us to make a decision here more than a year out, when, like I say, it's going to be a difficult enough year working on the budget. So, yeah.
It is that that extra staff person is in the 2022 budget, so it's a year out. So there's still opportunity for council to consider that. This recommendation has been moved and seconded. Anything further on it? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item?
Item 7.4 is a resolution regarding the extension of agreement for Integrity Commissioner Services. And there is a staff recommendation that the agreement dated December 18th, 2018, between Robert J. Swayze and the Corporation of the City of Stratford for provision of Integrity Commissioner Services be extended for a further two-year term to December 9th, 2022.
Is there a mover? Counselor Ingram and Counselor Clifford. Discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Support.
Carrie, next item?
Item 7.5 is a resolution for the supply and deliver of regular gasoline, clear and colored diesel tender results. And there is a staff recommendation that T-2020-37 to supply and deliver regular gasoline and clear and colored diesel be awarded to McEwen Petroleum for both... and clear and colored diesel be awarded to McEwen Petroleum for bulk deliveries to the Stratford Service Centre and to Dowler Carn Limited for bulk deliveries to the St. Mary's Service Centre from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2024.
A mover for that? Counselor Ritzma, seconded by Counselor Gaffney. Discussion. Seeing, oh, Counselor Burbach?
Thank you. Just, I just wanted to make a note that as we're moving forward, we've talked about it before at council, that we'd like to move towards hybrid and electric vehicles, which would reduce this budget line significantly. So I'd just like to point out that that's really important.
And further? If not, all those in favor?
Support.
Let's carry. Next item.
Item 7.6 is a resolution regarding revisions to the City of Stratford's signed by law. And there is a staff recommendation that council receive for information this report on possible revisions to sign by law 159-2004. And that staff advertise notice of intent to amend the signed by law in accordance with Schedule III of Notice Policy C.3.10.
Counselor Ingram, you'll move that. Seconded by Counselor Henderson. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Gaffney.
Yeah, I had some real estate friends of mine asked me about in Stratford, they're required to keep their lawn signs to a certain size. And it was pointed out to me that there's been some real estate people coming into Stratford putting in signs that are, I'm told, are substantially bigger than what our local realtors are restricted to. I don't know if we have a comment on that or an understanding of that.
Through your worship, if there is an issue, if they can contact our bylaw department, and then we'll do the investigation.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Vazalakos?
So I noticed that there was commentary around pro act, taking a more proactive approach to signage and having, rather than just it being complaint-based. Would that be just within the current, you know, bylaw officers that we have or staff flagging things, you know, as they're going around the city? Is that the intent of that?
Yeah, through your worship, that is the intent, because our bylaw officers, we're not asking for additional bylaw enforcement officers. It's just when they're out doing investigations, sometimes they will come across signs that are in violation of it. A lot of times what they do is they'll, they see a sign, especially signs that are just, you know, done at a corner or something like that, they'll pull those signs if they're blocking the sightlines and things like that. And so just being a bit more proactive that way, especially if they see a sightline issue, that could be a safety issue.
Thank you.
We can't hear you, Dan.
I had done mute. My apologies. Seeing nothing else, all those in favor?
Support.
It's carried. Next item.
Item eight is business which previous notice has been given. So turning to your agenda, item 8.1 is regarding the proposed caution agreement with Shinny Canada Glass Limited.
Through you, your worship. As noted on the agenda, there is an update to be given. So I can advise that additional information and responses to the questions raised will be posted to the City of Stratford website as soon as possible. A further update on the draft cost-sharing agreement will be provided as well as soon as possible. Thank you, your worship.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you. And we will endeavor to make sure that public has given notice and about the upcoming sessions where the process will continue with regard to the application. And next item, Ms. Defoe.
Moving on to item nine, reports of the standing committees. Item 9.1 is the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee. And there are two items listed for consideration as follows. Item 9.1.1 is extension of the Water and Sewage Billing Services Agreement with Festival Hydro, Inc. for a one-year term. And item 9.1.2 is regards to Stratford landfill public input invited from October 2020.
Counselor Vazalakos, she'll move that. Counselor Gaffney will second. Discussion. Counselor Clifford?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about the report, the follow-up report. Is that report coming from Hydro, or is it coming from the City of Stratford or an outside consultant as far as the cost per invoice?
Ms. Baroness, can you answer that question, please?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. And here it says that a follow-up report be prepared in 2021 outlining the rationale for the cost of $3.30. I know we had talked about it before, and it seemed quite high, but I didn't with COVID and stuff, it hadn't been done. But I'm asking, who's gonna prepare the report? Is it an outside consultant? Is it Hydro, or is it the City of Stratford?
I'm not quite sure at this point, so I will check that out and get back to you.
Through your worship, Adulovic here. It's something that we'll be working with Festival Hydro on. I know they said that they'll be looking at it internally. And then, you know, it's something that we will review with them based on the information they provide us. And so then we would then provide a report back to council as city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Deloar. Is there anything further? If not, all those in favor the motion? Opposed, any? Thank you. Carried. Next item.
Item 9.2 is Report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee. And there is one item listed for consideration as follows. Item 9.2.1 is the Operating Budget Variance Report as of September 30th, 2020.
Counselor Clifford, you'll move. Seconded, Counselor Gaffney. Discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Support.
Let's carry. Item 10, there is notice, no notice of intent given. So we'll go to reading of the bylaws, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Paul.
There are two bylaws listed for considerations as follows. Item 11.1 is an addendum agreement for water and sewage billing and collection services. And item 11.2 is acceptance of tender for the supply and delivery of gasoline and diesel. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Is there a mover? Be taken unanimously. Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Burbach. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Support.
Let's carry unanimously. So we'll go to first and second readings of bylaws 11, 1, and 2. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Bunting, moving first and second reading. All those in favor?
Support.
Third and final reading. Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Clifford for bylaws 11, 1, and 11, 2. All those in favor?
Support.
Opposed, any? Let's carry. Next item.
Are there any consent agenda items to be considered by council?
Through the mayor, I had an item.
Counselor Seven?
So CA 2020-104, the improvements for long-term care staffing, I would like to move that we endorse that item.
Okay, mover by Counselor Seven, the seconders, Counselor Burbach, thank you. Is there anyone wish to speak to it? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry. Is there any other items on the consent agenda? Counselor Vazalakos?
Yes, CA 2020-110, the Conservation Authority. I would like to support the resolution or to forward the resolution as drafted by the Conservation Authority of Ontario organization in terms of sort of pausing some of the changes that are coming through and giving an opportunity for a more collaborative approach to changes to legislation.
Thank you. Seconders, Counselor Burbach. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Support.
Opposed, any? Two opposed, and I carries. Thank you. Next item. Anything further in your business? Anything else on consent agenda? Oh, Counselor Burbach, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to bring forward the Bill 218 that came from the township of Armath, talking about the Elections Act. I would like us to endorse that as well. So it's a proposed change to the municipal election system that will not allow anything but first past the post system. And we know that London has already moved to a different balloting system, and this would force them to move back. But it also takes away the choice from municipalities to have a say over the type of voting system that they would like to use.
And so motion to support. Moved by Counselor Burbach and seconded Counselor Vazalakos? Were you seconding that, Kathy? Okay, thank you. Anything further? If not, all those in favor?
Support.
Opposed, any? And that's carried. Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? If not, Counselor Henderson, I believe you have new business for today. You have to unmute one.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we have staff report back on proxy voting, on how we could move forward with that.
Counselor Vazalakos, she'll second that? Yes, speak to it?
Yeah, I'd like to second it, but I'd like clarification that it includes proxy voting for our committees, like committees of council, but it also includes proxy voting for council votes. If possible.
So if we could leave it generic for proxy voting to be conducted on city committees? And then they can give a report on all of them?
Okay.
All right. Is there anything further on that? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, any? Let's carry. Is there anything further? Counselor Bunting?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I don't know if anybody else got an email today from Craig Thompson at Ballin Moran. Mr. Thompson has advised me that there are, his movies under the stars has been approached by a number of community-focused activities to use the drive-in over the Christmas season, in particular, the Council of Churches. I believe that he's already started the ball rolling with regards to submitting some information to Ms. Jordan. And apparently, it's been approved to already bypass some of the subcommittee and committee situation. However, he feels that possibly that this might be, because it's a short timeline, I don't know how we could get around getting, if this is to get council approval, if how this would go about getting it done before in good time, so that the activities could be could be, could take place, let's put it that way. There was a letter attached from Zion Lutheran Church with respect to activities and their fundraising things through the churches for Christmas. So maybe a member of staff could speak to that?
I can do that, Mr. Defoe. I am aware of this. We did have a meeting on Friday. Mr. Defoe and I did discuss it. The information we needed to complete the application was received Friday morning. That was incomplete until that time. Staff has said they will work on the report and circulate it to all the departments. And I have made an offer to Tony White, who works with Mr. Thompson, that we would host council meeting, a special council meeting to get this approved as soon as we have the application complete.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything further? Missing, Counselor?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that a bunch of us are wearing the color purple today. It is in support of Women Abuse Prevention Month, and it is to support two of our local facilities, the Emily Murphy Center and Optimism Place. So I just wanted everyone out in Facebook land or watching live to be aware that purple on Wednesday, I believe, November 25th, is the, in fact, the actual day.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ingram, for that. And I appreciate all the members of council taking part in this opportunity to raise awareness. There's nothing further. We'd need a motion to recess to reconvening committee. And our first committee is Infrastructure, Transportation, Safety, followed by Social Services. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Ritzma, all those in favor? And that's carried. All right, I will turn it over to the Counselor Vazalakos. And the clerk will join over here to walk us through that agenda, and I will give her the spot. Counselor Vazalakos will chair, and then if you want to assist with the items. Take item four and read out the recommendations.
Thank you. I'll call the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee to order. We'll start with any disclosures of keen interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, we move on to delegations, and there aren't any. And, sorry, Ms. Defoe, are you gonna walk through these?
Through the chair, I would be happy to. So item three, delegations, there are none scheduled. Item four, report of the chief building official. Item 4.1 is the proposed amendment to Building Bylaw 112-2005, including fee Schedule A. I will note this item is also listed for consideration on the November 23rd council reconvened agenda. And there is a motion before you as follows, that council approve an amendment to the Building Bylaw 112-2005 and increase permit fees for all types of building permits as of January 1st, 2021.
Thank you. There was a report circulated. We did have a public meeting to get feedback. And so do we have any questions? Yes, Counselor Gaffney?
I'll move the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Seconder for that, Counselor Burbach. Any feedback or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Support.
Opposed, if any? Seeing none, and that is carried. And so now all we need is a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Bunting, all in favor?
Support.
And that's carried. Thank you very much.
Counselor Henderson?
I think we've lost Counselor Henderson.
Counselor Bunting is vice chair. Would you be willing to call the meeting to order?
Thanks, Bonnie. I'd like to call the Social Services Committee meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Moving on to the subcommittee minutes. They're there for your information. There are no delegations scheduled. And 5.1, item 5.1, is Tatiana gonna jump in there? Thank you very much.
Through the chair, yes. Item 5.1 is Introduction to Bill 204, Helping Tenants in Small Businesses Act. And there is a subcommittee recommendation listed as follows, that the report titled Introduction to Bill 204, Helping Tenants in Small Business Act 2020, be received for information.
Moved by Counselor Burbach, seconded by Counselor Vazalakos. Any questions, any comments? Call a question. I thought David wanted to speak there. All in favor?
Support.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Item 5.2 is Delegation Authorities for Housing Division Agreements, including properties owned by the Corporation of the City of Stratford and Perth and Stratford Housing Corporation. And there is a subcommittee recommendation that the report, Delegation Authorities for Housing Division Agreements, including properties owned by the city and Perth and Stratford Housing Corp., be received for information purposes. And that council delegate authority to the Director of Social Services or Manager of Housing or Supervisor of Social Services Housing Division to sign agreements between prospective tenants, program recipients, housing providers/landlords, and the Corporation of the City of Stratford and/or the Perth and Stratford Housing Corporation.
Move. Move by, one second, my screen just jumped here, sorry. Move by Counselor Gaffney. Move by Counselor Gaffney. And seconded by Counselor BD. All those in favor?
Support.
Opposed, if any? It's carried. Thank you very much.
Item six is report of the Manager of Ontario Works, and item 6.1 is a social assistance, recovery and renewal plan update. And there is a subcommittee recommendation that the report titled Social Assistance Recovery and Renewal Plan Update be received for information.
And that is for your information. Thank you. All we've left is a motion to adjourn.
You would still need a motion to receive.
Sorry, I'm I'm sorry. The previous. Counselor Ritzma and Counselor Burbach? All those in favor?
Support.
Thank you. That's unanimous. And a motion to adjourn, please. Counselor Clifford and Counselor, come on, somebody else other than Counselor Burbach. Thank you very much. Counselor Vazalakos, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll council will now reconvene and I'll turn it over to the clerk if she would.
Through your worship, are there any declarations of pecuniary interests stated at standing committee and to be restated at the reconvening portion?
Seeing none, we will go on to committee reports.
Item 15.2.1 is from the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee. And there is one item listed for consideration as follows. Item 4.1, which was the proposed amendment to Building Bylaw, including fee schedule A. That council approve an amendment to the Building Bylaw and increase permit fees for all types of building permits as of January 1, 2021.
Counselor Vazalakos will move, seconded by Counselor Ingram. Is there any discussion at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Support.
And that's carried. We'll now go to reading of the bylaws, and there is two bylaws to be considered. The first is the revised the building permit fees. And the second is the confirmatory bylaw for this afternoon's proceedings, and they can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Burbach? Moving may be taken collectively. All those in favor?
Support.
If any, and that is carried. So we'll go to first and second reading of bylaws 11, 3 and 11, 4. And that would be moved by Counselor Ingram and Counselor Vazalakos. That the revised building permit fees and the confirmatory bylaws be read a first and a second time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any?
Support.
And the third and final reading of bylaws 11, 3 and 11, 4 is Counselor Gaffney moving. And Counselor Burbach seconding that the bylaws to revise the building permit fee and the confirmatory bylaw be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. And that concludes this afternoon's meeting and be happy to take a motion to adjourn. Counselor Burbach and Counselor Ritzma, thank you. All those in favor?
Support.
And that's carried. Thank you, everyone.